Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee for July 22, 2013. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Committee, and I'm joined by and would like to welcome the newly constituted Budget and Finance Committee. We're rejoined again by Councilmember Mitchell Englander, and I'd like to welcome our new members, Councilmember Bob Blumenthal and Councilmember Mike Bonin. Welcome, gentlemen, to the committee. I know we're going to be doing terrific work together. Both of you come to this task with a wealth, excuse the pun, a wealth of experience actually in budgetary matters, and it's going to be a great pleasure working with you, and I'm very pleased to have you here. So, welcome, and if, I guess I should give you an opportunity to say a thing or two, if you'd like, or we can get started.
No, just, I'll just echo that. I'm really excited about being here, working on budget issues for the city, working again with you. We had the opportunity to serve together years ago, and, you know, I think nothing is more important than getting the fiscal health of the city in order and to help the city thrive and be the great city we know it can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
All I've got to say is ditto. Let's get to work.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we're going to get to work, first of all, with general public comment. If anybody would like to offer general public comment, please fill out a card and bring it forward. I see none so far. Is anyone in the process of filling out a card? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, general public comment will be closed. We're going to proceed first today with our closed-session items, numbers one through four. Is there anyone wishing to offer public comment on items one through four? And I see no cards or hands on items one through four, so public comment on the closed-session items is now closed. And before we retire into closed session, members, I'd like to propose items six, eight, nine, and ten as consent candidates. Unless anybody has questions or concerns about any of those, each of these are routine matters, but if any member would like them considered, we can. Otherwise, seeing no objection, those matters will be deemed approved on the consent calendar. And that will bring us to closed session. We'll go ahead and move so that the audience can stay here, and we'll be back shortly. Thank you, everyone. We are back now in open session, and we have dealt with items one through four in closed session. We're ready to proceed to item number five.
Item number five is the City Attorney Report relative to an outside council fund appropriation for Housing Department contract with Best, Best, and Krieger for Cecile Hotel litigation.
Good afternoon.
Anne Haley, City Attorney's Office. So what we have before us is just a, what will be a final closeout request for this matter. The Best, Best, and Krieger firm assisted us on this litigation for the Housing Department, and this is money that's already owing, actually, both for the firm and for an expert that they utilized to assist us, so this would be the last request for this contract.
Okay, and this is from Housing Department funds, not, no impact on the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Englander?
Just a very quick question. If I could, why do we have to extend the contract for 18 months just to allow the payment? Is there a way to just allow the payment, or the controller won't allow that?
It's the controller. Because also, as long as services, we have to make sure the term of the contract covers period of service, so the firm actually performed some service that was-
So that we're working after, for that 18 months, is what you're suggesting?
Yes, and not for the full time, but for part of that time. So the term, we just need the term to cover the time of work.
Hmm, okay.
You need the term to still be, you need the payment to be made during the term of the contract, is that-
Well, actually, no, but as long as the, we need the term to cover at least a period of time where work was performed.
Okay.
But actually, because even now, as you see the term we're asking for, that date has already passed as well.
Okay. Are they waiving their penalties to?
No, yes, they are.
Anything further, members? Okay, thank you. It'll be the action of the committee to approve the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number seven.
Item number seven is City Administrator Report, City Administrative Officer Report relative to the results of the 2013 tax and revenue anticipation those transactions. There's a colored version of the presentation that's attached to the report that we will be passing out for you to follow.
Mr. Santana, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to the new members. So in light of recent events in Detroit, it's particularly timely that we have this presentation on the issuance of the TRAN. For the new members, the city borrows about $1.3 billion a year for two reasons. One is for cash flow. We're like a business. We don't receive all our receipts all on day one, and so we borrow to make up for the fact that most of our revenue comes in the second half of the year. And we also borrow to be able to pay our pension payments in advance. By issuing, by writing our check and paying off all of our pension obligations by July 15th, the city ends up saving about $32 million, and we get a discount for a prepayment. Other jurisdictions pay it on a bi-weekly basis, and so the pension funds don't benefit from having the huge cash to invest, and so by paying in advance, we actually save money. The city's been issuing the TRAN since the 1990s, and at the last issuance of the $1.3 billion, we received the lowest interest rate in the city's history, an interest rate 17 basis points. To put it in context, 100 basis points is 1%. So if you have an interest for your home of 5%, that'll be about 500 basis points. So 17 basis points is a very small number, as small as it could get, frankly, and for borrowing the large amount. It's a, part of the issues of the TRAN is also a way that we check in with the investors and with bond rating agencies and how the city's financial health is viewed by Wall Street. The state's no different when they issue the RANs every year. And so part of what we do as part of the TRAN is that we engage with investors directly. Myself, Ha, Ben Seka, and our advisors and our underwriter, who was De La Rosa and Associates, spent about 10 days around the country, meeting with every major investor, from Baltimore to Philadelphia, New York, even to New Hampshire, San Francisco, and Chicago, to basically give them an update on the city's finances. We also meet with our bond rating agencies. The outcome of those meetings with the bond rating agencies resulted in the city receiving the highest credit score for the TRAN. What you have before you is our investor presentation. This is a public document that we, that we use to essentially tell the city's credit story, and I'll go on, go through all of it, but just give some of the highlights, particular for the newer members who would be interested in hearing some of the progress the city has made. So the items that really the investor community was responding to was the behaviors that they've seen the council and the mayor engage in over the last four years, particularly when it comes to our savings account, our reserve fund. The fact that the city has the largest reserve in its history, that includes not only exceeding our 5% of general fund's goal and policy, but actually establishing, for the first time, a healthy budget stabilization fund and a UB to deal with any uncertainty that may occur within the context of the fiscal year, was something that investors responded very favorably to, as well as the bond rating agencies. As part of the narrative, you should know, we shared with them the story that, that when the budget was released, we did not have information pertaining to the latest installment of former CRA dollars into the city. Those dollars came in almost immediately after the mayor released the budget, and your council, beginning with the leadership of Mr. Krikorian and this committee, opted to move those dollars into the budget stabilization fund, as opposed to adding new programs or unwinding some of the difficult decisions that had been made over the last four years. It was an important anecdote for them to understand how the city's culture and behavior has evolved over the last few years. We also talked about the fact that the framework that the city has engaged in has been led by a, some principles that were adopted early on in the crisis that laid out a strategic plan for the city, confronting some very challenging, difficult options that have been made, but have resulted in the kind of sound fiscal place that the city is now in. We also, for the first time, met our policy initiative to put aside 1% of the general fund for capital. That policy has been in place for several years, and never in the city's history has it ever done it. Every year, we basically set it and don't do it. This is the first time that we've actually did it. And then the final, the final two pieces is that, one, the budget really lays out a roadmap for the future, and we're able to actually see the light at the end of the tunnel where the city will no longer be confronting a deficit effective fiscal year 17, 18, should we continue on the progress that we've made. And then finally, the fact that the city's economy is rebounding and doing much better than in previous years. To provide outside validation of that point, we commissioned Beacon Economics, Chris Thorenberg, who some of you may know, to do a specific analysis of the city of Los Angeles economy. It's very difficult to get data that's just about the city. Most of the data is about the region or the county, but to sort of separate out how the city of L.A.'s doing in comparison to the rest of the region is difficult. So we asked Beacon to do a specific analysis, and their analysis, which you have with you, lays out a fairly optimistic picture about the state of the city economy. In some ways, we're leading and doing better than other parts of the county, and certainly at some point, it may be worthwhile reviewing that report and even meeting with Mr., with Dr. Thorenberg, Director. The, the only other, you could certainly go through this. We talk about the budget and how the budget included, while we confronted a $216 million deficit, if you go on page 10, about over 70% of the solutions that were found for that deficit were, in fact, ongoing solutions. There were a combination of ongoing revenues as well as other efficiencies and some of the savings that were identified due to some of the pension reforms that have already been adopted. And then the one-time revenues were put aside for one-time capital expenditures and for our reserve fund. In terms of our forecast, you could look on page 11, and we lay out what we anticipate the future to look like. The top chart shows what we expect revenues to grow by over the next few years, and we provide a general recommendation of about a 3% revenue growth over the largest, seven largest revenue sources in the city. That includes property tax, business tax, sales tax, hotel tax, documentary transfer tax, parking user tax, and utility taxes. Those seven make up the bulk of our revenues, and we're projecting about a 3.3% each year, an optimistic, but still fiscally responsible projection for the future. Now, as part of the budget stabilization fund policy that was adopted by this committee and the council, when those, the seven revenue sources exceed the 3.3% that's been identified, those dollars are treated as one-time and put aside in the budget stabilization fund to avoid us entering the sink, recreating the hole that we just walked out of. If we essentially start growing the size of our government based on episodic growth in the economy, such as the housing market that we're seeing really move very quickly, then we, then we are vulnerable to, again, setting ourselves up for another big fall in the future. So the budget stabilization fund is intended to avoid that kind of problem from occurring again, and also provide a revenue source to deal with future deficits. Now, speaking of future deficits, if you go on page 13, we do disclose that there are a number of budget assumptions that are laid out in this fiscal year budget and in our forecast to reach a sur, an ongoing surplus by fiscal year 17, 18. And those are that all employees contribute 10% towards the cost of premium, cost of healthcare, that there be no cost of living increases given after 14, 15, that the 5.5% step increase for the majority of our city employees be renegotiated, and that we continue to manage police overtime in, in a, in a way that balances the use of cash overtime, banked overtime, and then just continue to control the use of overtime as a whole. Those assumptions were laid out in the budget and disclosed. We also project out what happens if we're not successful in achieving those various goals, and we continue, or the deficit for fiscal year 17, 18 goes from being actually an ongoing surplus to a deficit of $33 million. So that's important to be, for purposes of disclosure, to lay out to investors and to our bond rating agencies what we identify as some of our challenges for the future and what are some of the issues that we're trying to confront. So while the broader message is that while the city has, in many ways, made significant progress, there is work to be done, and we continue that path forward. So you're happy to, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but overall, this is a good, a good story in relation to how the city is perceived by the financial markets and a validation of the hard work that your, your committee and the council have made.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Santana. Members, before we go to questions, I do have one card, so I'd like to ask Dr. Rhodes to come on up on this matter, and then we'll go to questions and discussions. Welcome.
Hi, it's nice to see folks again. I'm Dr. Molly Rhodes, and I'm a research analyst with SEIU 721. Have the pleasure during the budget process, mostly for Mr. Blumenthal, because Mike was there, of participating in our commentary on the budget. Regarding the TRANs, I feel compelled to say, because the unions are part of the narrative that have been presented to the bond agencies, that it is our view, the budget includes the funds for our raises, they were just not allocated for half the year. This is a technique we sought last year with layoff proposals, and we think it's baby splitting, and we don't like it. But that aside, the money is there in the UEB. There's 20 million allocated in a fund that was created for the first time called the Revenues for Economic Uncertainties, and then for, that was for general fund money. And then there was another category created, again, for the first time on special funds, that's about 10 million, that's called the Proposed Contingency for Obligatory Changes. Additionally, the Coalition works very, very hard with the JLNBC and the city on healthcare costs, and there's, the committee is aware that that hard work this year, and the CAO participated, will yield sailings of over 10 million. So we feel like the TRANs narrative about labor is overly pessimistic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Members? Mr. Blumenthal?
I'm just trying to make sense of all the numbers. The, I see the assumptions in terms of what, you know, various things the city does in terms of cost of living and civilian employees. What are the assumptions, the economic assumptions, in terms of where the economy is going that you're basing this on?
So the, on the revenue side, the, we lay out an optimistic picture in terms of the economy is going to continue to grow at a similar pace that it's growing now, but we lay out, you know, a projection of 3.3% growth in the seven largest revenue sources due to the growth in the economy. That's in following sort of a discussion with various economists. Some argue that, you know, it's going to do better. Some argue that we're headed for another recession in the next few years, so no one has an actual crystal ball. What other jurisdictions I know up the street, what they do at the county, is that they, instead of readjusting the revenue projection based on whatever news comes out of Wall Street, whether optimistic or not, if you lay out a consistent growth in revenue, and whenever revenues exceed that amount, you, you basically treat it as one-time and put it in a budget stabilization fund that could later be used to mitigate when revenues don't hit that target. It's a way of providing a greater level of certainty and minimizing the liability to sort of the swings in the economy. So our forecast sets it up for that, to maintain sort of a, a optimistic but fiscally responsible sort of approach. We all know, you know, just recently, the L.A. Times had a headline about the housing boom, you know, the, it, the impact, while it's on property taxes, but we know because of PRO 13, that there's a cap on how much they could, so much property taxes would grow on an annual basis. The biggest impact, frankly, is on the documentary transfer tax, which, you know, I call it a dangerous tax because it just skyrockets, you know, over a very short period of time, as we saw during the height of the last boom, and then plummets when there's a recession. So that, when it's combined with the other six large revenue streams, is, is, and capped by the 3.3%, is a way of sort of maintaining a balance for any vulnerabilities and volatility.
So this, and I like the idea of, you know, you cut the peaks and you fill in the valleys and you get a stabilization, and that's generally sound. I'm trying to understand the slope of the line, and you're saying that the county uses a different percentage?
No, we, we're trying to move what this reflects to sort of the same kind of budgeting that you see in other jurisdictions, where it's a fairly optimistic, but fiscally responsible approach.
The optimistic is the 3.3% growth rate?
Yeah, right. As opposed to projecting there's going to be a recession in two years and there's going to be flat-lined withdrawal. So what we try to do is lay out what is, in talking to economists, what is sort of a responsible projection in terms of revenue, knowing that some, like, property tax may exceed that, but others may be less than that, but on average, the seven largest are likely to grow 3.3%. And so, and so it's a way of looking, having the long-term vision as opposed to reacting to whatever headline we see in the newspaper that week.
I guess more specifically on that point, I think the critical element is, are our underlying assumptions about economic growth in the region consistent with the underlying economic projections that other agencies are making, the county, the state, other cities in the area, that sort of thing?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, we have a different revenue base because we have different forms of taxes and different balance of it, but the underlying economic projections of growth are roughly consistent, our analysis and, say, the counties and-
Right, and as well as giving the best advice we get from a series of economists, from UCLA to others, from the LAEDC. So it's, you know, no one has a crystal ball, no one projected the kind of recession that we encountered, but by overall, most economists are projecting a continual growth of our local economy, and this is what Chris Thorenberg does in his analysis, and, and how that material reflects in our revenue streams. And so it's in the, it's in the same ballpark as other jurisdictions. What we're trying to get away from is something that we, we did in the past, which is that we would basically project our revenue based on sort of the revenue streams as they reflected today. So, you know, several years ago, when the economy was doing really well and led by the documentary transfer tax, there was a projection that the revenue will continue at that pace and, which exceeded the 3.3%. It was much more aggressive, and that later proved to be a deadly mistake, that in fact that was not the case. And so we're avoiding doing that and instead approaching it a little bit more conservatively, but at the same time with the, with the best information about the growth still continuing.
Mr. Bonin?
I was just sort of on the, on the same point, just that's, it's such a critical number, because you, you know, if you change that slope just a tiny bit, the out-year dramatically changes. And so I would hope it's one that you want to be conservative about, but revisit every, every year or so, not, not the way, the mistakes we've made in the past here on the state level where you make these assumptions that the line is going to be, you know, much steeper than it ever actually is, but, but there's also a danger in under, you know, underassuming what that slope is going to be. So I guess it's just, I'm just interested, I think that's probably, has the largest impact on, on what these numbers look like in the out-year, is looking at that number closely and making sure that we adjust it on an annual basis appropriately.
Right, and, and that's partly how we were able to deal with our shortfall. So, you know, no one could have anticipated the dissolution of the CRA, right? There was talk about it, and when it happened, we were all sort of surprised that it did. That did provide both the one-time revenue source and an ongoing revenue source, and so once we received that additional revenue source on an ongoing basis, then that got folded into our projections, because that was, that was an event that occurred, we could pretty much count that the governor is not going to recreate the CRAs, and we were able to now fold that in into our future projections. On the expenditure side, we do the same thing, right? So it's, we, we actually have a finer crystal ball on the expenditures because we have labor contracts that show certain obligations. We have history to, to show us what healthcare costs grow by on an annual basis on average. We have a sense of any kind of ongoing expenditures. What we don't have is a real crystal ball about sort of some episodic event. So we lose a major lawsuit, for example. How do we deal with that? And in relation to, you know, the question, the issue that was raised by Dr. Rhodes, that was a question we were asked about, you know, how, in light of the fact that the city is contractually obligated to provide the step increase, the 5.5% step increase on January 1st, if we were to go to do that, how are we going to pay for that in year two? So she, Dr. Rhodes is correct that the city does have funding to take care of that increase for six months. The challenge is that we don't have it as an ongoing expenditure, and that's part of what contributes to the structural deficit. And so those were the kinds of questions that were raised in the course- And so those were the kinds of questions that were raised in the course of our investor discussions, looking at not just the short term, but looking at the long term.
Did sequestration factor into this at all?
Sequestration is looked at on, somewhat on the, on the revenue side, but it, many of the programs impacted are special funded programs, and so this is a snapshot of the general fund. And so we made adjustments as part of the budget to any known reductions that we were going to experience as a result of sequestration. A lot of the grants that we receive for sequestration, because they're one-time, or they're, you know, we receive certain police grants or transportation grants, or housing grants are not even mentioned in here, because they're not general fund-supported. So there, there was an adjustment in the budget, and so what, to the extent that we did that, it would be reflected in here already. But, you know, we don't know, you know, hopefully, the state's done in terms of going after local government, and, but every year, we always end up with a surprise of sorts, and so we don't know what those are, and so we don't include those in that. Although we do get asked, I mean, that's, that's one of the regular questions that get asked in terms of, and, in terms of any anticipated impact from the state budget, and obviously, the state's doing better this year, and so, you know, that's, that helps our narrative.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for that. You know, especially in light of the recent news about Detroit, this is, it's terrific to hear feedback like this from people who are actually investing real dollars, because this is, you know, our investors are devoid of spin. There's no political acts to grind or anything, they're investing their money, and they're making risk assessments based on real data, and they're really smart people. And to have them have a more positive view of the city of Los Angeles as a place to invest their funds, I think is strong validation for the work that we've been doing here over the last several years, and so it's very good news. Thank you, Mr. Santana.
Yeah, the interesting thing was that, you know, we, we went out to the market for $1.3 billion, we received over $6 billion worth of orders, and so in addition to the low interest, that's another sign. In contrast, two years ago, we had to have our underwriters actually buy a big chunk of our debt, because we couldn't get enough investors from the outside to do it. So it's, it's, it is a sign. Obviously, what happens in Detroit also impacts the market. If, if investors are not paid what, what they believe is owed to them, then it sends an effect to the rest of us, even if we do have stronger credit, so we'll be watching that carefully.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. So we'll just note and file the report with our thanks. Is there any other item before us? Or any other cards that we've... Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.